So the clerk, please read the preamble.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held Monday, March 11th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. in person in the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Mayor Patrick Lovickson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astound, RCN 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound, RCN Channel 17, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will provide an opportunity during the meeting. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three, approval of minutes. In a motion to approve the minutes for the February 26, 2024 City Council regular meeting minutes.
So moved. Morgan Adams?
Anderson, second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, presentations. Item A, fiscal year-end 2023 audit report presented by Sheridan Jorgensen and...how do you say the last one?
What?
The last name.
Uh, Jorgensen.
Oh, of...I'm sorry.
Excessian.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. I thought that was the name of the firm. So I made you a primary partner there. Go ahead and...
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Sheridan Jorgensen. I am one of the audit partners at Excessian. Just here to give you a quick overview of the audit for 2023. It was delayed this year unfortunately due to the airport that is included in the financials. That audit report was not available until about a month ago, and so we've just been waiting all this time for that. Otherwise, it would have been done probably back in October, November. So, good news is we're finally done. So, just wanted to go through a few things. Overall, the audit went very well. Everything was ready for us. The journal entries have continued to go down every year, so they're lower than the past several years. And so, just shows that the books are in very good order, and there is very minimal entries that we had to make, and nothing of significance at all. In the audit report, the first thing in there is our opinion, which is really the most important part of our audit report. It's an unmodified opinion, and according to accounting standards, that's the best opinion you can have. And really, what it states in there, it's several pages long, but really just says that with the testing we did, that everything that we looked at, that we felt that the financial statements were free from material misstatement. It talks in there about internal controls, and it tells that we don't give an opinion on the internal controls, but we spend a lot of time looking at them. If there's ever going to be fraud or errors that will occur, it's going to be your internal controls that catch that. And so, we're not only looking at your written policies and procedures that you have in place, but also making sure that people are following them, which is the more important part. So, we actually sit down with them and make sure that those transactions are processed, that there's proper approval and review of those, and there was no issues when we did those walkthroughs with internal controls. In the audit report, there are several different parts. There's just a couple of parts that I will highlight. The first section within the audit report is called the management discussion and analysis. It's about five pages. It just gives you a quick summary of what happened during the year, some of the variances, and why, and changes from last year. So, I'd recommend that if you don't really look at anything else in the audit report, that you at least scan through that. It'll just kind of give you a quick review of what happened during 2023. There are two sets of financial statements in the audit report. First, the government-wide, which is a more long-term outlook statement. So, that includes your fixed assets, long-term debt, as well as the airport. The investment in the airport is in those statements. In the fund financial statements, that's going to be more what you're typically used to seeing internally. It just shows the results of each of the funds. So, on page 22, you'll see that overall, there was an increase of $1.5 million. The majority of that was due to the general fund, which was 2.8, offset by the capital projects funds of about 1.8 million. There was a new standard that we had to implement this year related to leases, and so there was nothing of significance that needed to be recorded as part of that, but that is something that we will look at every year. And then, this next year, we'll be looking at subscription-based IT agreements, and just reviewing those, determining if those fall under this other new standard that's taking place, and then will be adjusted accordingly. So, that will also be something coming up. Then, the other thing that we do, did as part of the audit, was to issue the alternative method single audit for the federal money that you received. There was no findings as a result of that audit. So, that is just a quick overview of the audit. I can obviously go into any more detail or any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Nope. Okay. Thank you. So...
All right. Yeah, no problem. Have a good evening.
You, too. We will need to...I'm going to look for a motion to accept the audit as submitted.
So moved.
Second, Morgan Adams.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item B, the fiscal year 24, 25, City of Prospect Heights budget presentation for revenues and all general fund departments, city council, administration, finance, legal, community development, police, and public works. I'm going to turn that over to Joe.
Thank you. We have a wonderful staff of department directors that really put a lot of time in prioritizing and planning and trying to make the most of what resources that we have, and I can't say enough about them. And so, this has been a collective effort. The budget process really starts in December. Sherry and Bob do the bulwark of it as far as also getting a sense of what we're anticipating on the revenue side. They print a lot of information together about water rates, pension funding. It's just a long process. It's a collective process, and they do a great job. I think overall, just it's a good budget in the sense that it's balanced, and we have seen that revenues have come back. As all of us know, we went through a rough period with COVID, and that seems to be bouncing back in a number of areas such as hotel motel tax, restaurant, places for eating tax, and things like that. And that is among the revenues that we count on to fund city services, police, public works, community development, and others. I don't want to take too much time because really, the hard work that's done is at the department level of the directors meet with their staff, and they look at every item. What do they need in the coming year? What do they don't need? They go item by item and try to present a budget to the city that meets needs for services, but also lives within the constraints that we have. I'm going to turn it over to Sherry right now, who's spent much of the last, I'd say, three months on putting this process together, and she'll walk you through some of the highlights, and it's pretty much a static budget. There's really not too much different from last year. We will...this is a two-night process. We will also come back where we talk about capital improvements, our utilities, and we run both a sewer system and a water system. We'll spend time on that. But at this point, I think I'd just rather turn it over to Sherry for the details.
Thanks, Joe. I just want to echo Joe's comments about how I appreciate everyone's work and effort on the budget process. It was detailed. It was deep. We really dug in and tried our best to come up with a good proposal, and I believe we have done that. Today, we're going to cover the funds as Joe mentioned, and then on the 25th, our plan is to hit all the other funds, SWAN, MFT, police pension, capital, the debt service fund. So, that'll be saved for next meeting. Today, we're going to focus on the general fund, which is our main fund, where we run most all of our operating costs, expenses, and revenue through. On our agenda after that, we're going to first look at some financial issues and fund balance projections. We're going to talk about the preliminary results for fiscal '24, that audit coming up April 30th of '24. So, we have a projection for where we'll end up. We'll look at our debt service requirements, and then the departments will each take a turn at their individual presentations into their detail. So, we have ...I'm highlighting three current financial strategic issues that we're facing and challenged with. First and foremost is probably the police pension funding for the fiscal year. Our recommendation from our actuary for fiscal '25 was $1.6 million, and that amount is contributed to the fund from two sources. One is the annual tax levy, and the other is the city's contribution from the general fund. So, for fiscal '25, we're projecting a tax levy of $480,000. That was our 2023 levy request. Once it's extended, we won't know the final number until summer, but we're pretty confident that it's going to come in near that number. So, to make the 1.6 less the $480 from the tax levy will be the city's contribution of $1.46 million for the total. I'm sorry, 1.1 for the total of 1.6. That represents 100% contribution from the city of what the actuary recommended. We also...it's 200% of the required. So, two...we get two numbers when we look at the recommended pension contribution. Our required by the state, their requirement standard is lower than what the actuary would project. They have different assumptions, different methodologies, and so we have a range of contributions. This year, I'm happy to say we're able to contribute 100% of the recommended number. That's what's built into this current budget. I just want to briefly mention, there's a state...the state budget, there's a proposal on eliminating tier-two benefits in the state's budget. That's all just in discussion phase right now, but we did go out and get a projection to see what would happen to our recommendations should that pass at the state level in their budget. And if that were to pass, we would...the 1.6 million would be 1.9. It's a $300,000 difference if everyone moves to tier-one instead of tier-two. Again, it's all in discussion. There's no one way or the other that I could say it's going by. I just wanted to relay that. We're watching it. It's on our radar. Obviously, as the funding for the pension plan contributions increases, that's something that we're going to have to be aware of. Our tax levy is limited by 5% increase every year. So, as this contribution number goes up, our tax levy isn't going to fund a significant portion of that at just 5% a year. So, the shortfall would come from the general fund going forward.
And that...you and I talked earlier today, it's not just the 300,000. It's the 1 point...instantly, we would be 1.33 million less in our funding. So, we would drop another 3% or 4% as far as our funding level.
On the net liability of the pension fund. The net liability is what we will cover future costs. So, in that projection, while each...the annual contribution goes up by 300, the unfunded liability went up by 1.3 million. So, it's growing exponentially. So, we have our eye on the radar for that, and we'll just kind of see how the state goes and decides. Second thing is I wanted to call to your attention the debt service requirements. The 2103 bonds have not been issued. It's a typo. It's 2013. The 2013 and 2020 road bonds are coming due. They will be paid off in full in fiscal '27. The payday is December of '26. So, if we're going to...at this time, if we want to provide for the capital improvement work to be done, we would want to give some consideration. We recommend the referendum coming up in the next year or two. Lastly, our capital improvement plan is a big number.
I have a question.
Oh.
When do we have to have the matter on the referendum for the 2025 election, or when do we have to have it on the referendum?
Well, the tax...we'll pay off in December of '26. That will be our paid...that means in the 2026 levy, there will be no debt service number unless we issue the bonds prior to that.
So, we have to issue them in '25 or '26?
'25 or '26.
Okay.
Yeah. Or probably, I would say, first half of '26 because the levy we're going to start working on in October. Once we issue the bonds, it goes to the state, then they're aware of it, and it's included...I'm sorry, county. It's included in our levy automatically. So, we would need that debt service requirement for the new bonds into the county September of '26 because we'll want to put it in the '26 levy.
Okay. Thank you.
Capital improvement plan. We have a preliminary plan. As Joe had mentioned, we'll cover that in the next meeting when we do the construction fund budget. We have pretty...some pretty significant projects coming in, a total of about 6.9 million in the proposed budget for fiscal '25. Administration and our grant writer and staff, we've done a good job on our grant funding. We have about 5.4 million already awarded to us to cover those projects in 2025. The city general fund would then...I'm sorry, construction fund would then cover the difference. Proposed budget also includes some interfund transfers totaling 1.1 million into the capital fund, a million from the general fund, and 95,000 from the SWAN fund. Future years planned improvements are tentative, and they're based on many factors, including grant fund...continued grant funding, federal, state, and local support, as well as consideration of the bond referendum. Again, we'll pass out the plan and go into details of the specific projects at the next meeting. Any questions? Okay. Here's our fund balance projections. By fund, we have the April 30th, '23 fund balance per the audit report that we just heard about, that has just been recently issued. We have our projected '23, '24 results with an ending fund balance on April 30th of '24, and then our proposed budget for '24 to '25 in those last three columns, and our projected fund balance at the end of April 30th of '25. Tonight, we're just going to focus on top-line general fund. In fiscal year '24, we anticipate a significant revenue over expenses, the 1.9 million. And then, in our budget for '24, '25 is about a break even at a plus 1,96,000, ending fund balance of $19.9 million. Next. Total revenues projected at 11.4 versus budget of 10.5 in the general fund is 108% of what we budgeted for this fiscal year. Increase is mainly due to investment income. As we have talked about in the past, we're about 680,000 over budget just in investment income because of the market fluctuation. We've also gotten our first distribution for the intergovernmental agreement from Glendale. 500,000 was the first year's payment. Next year, it'll be 310, and then every year after that, it'll be 280. So, that's how that number's going to flow into our numbers. Expenditures overall, we have a savings of 5.5%, projecting to spend 9.5 million, and we budgeted 10, mainly due to the deferral of some planned capital projects we did not get started on or get through, some of the capital improvement plans that we had, and then wherever possible, some of our departments, most all of them are under budget, just based on conservative spending. In the general fund, the important number in the fund balance of 19.9 million, it's broken down there at the bottom, non-spendable, restricted, committed, and unassigned. Our emergency reserve, according to our fund balance policy for the past several years, has been set at $3 million. Due to our increased expenses in this coming budget, the reserve is now 3.3 million. It's supposed to be...it's calculated at 30% of future year's budgeted expenses, so it jumped up a little bit. We still have a really solid unassigned fund balance of 10.8 million, which is approximately one year of budgeted expenses. So, strong position there. So, now, we're going to jump into some details on the general fund revenue and expenses. I'm going to turn it over to Bob, and he's going to take over.
Thanks, Sherry. So, I'll go over tonight is the proposed budget for revenue and expenditures, looking at our overview, where we...where our numbers came from. And if you look at the slide here, you see the proposed budget revenue for fiscal '25 is at 10,895. And then, if you look at over...on this slide, also had over the years, we've had actual dollars. And so, our budget for budget revenues is pretty consistent from what we see in the actual over the last couple of years. We're looking at about a 3.2% increase in budget revenues. And then, below there, it shows where most of our revenue sources are, our major revenue sources is the income tax, sales tax, the non-home rule, and use tax, vehicle stickers, traffic fines, and ordinance fines make up the majority of our revenues. On the next slide here, you see a graph, a chart that shows the percentage of the budget revenues, how they come in, and you have the big ones at 39% and 28%. 39% represents the intergovernmental taxes from the state, which is the income and sales tax that come in, and the 28% is the local taxes that the city receives, which is non-home rule, sales tax, the use tax, utility, places for eating, the OTB handle tax, cannabis, and video gaming taxes. So, about 67% of the city's budget revenues come in from those sources. And then, you have the other percentages where you see the licensing fees, grants, franchise fees, building and zoning fees, public safety revenue, which is really stuff from the traffic fines and ordinance violations, and then interfund charges, the interfunds paying the general fund for certain revenue sources. On this slide here, just a graph to kind of show over the years of where we are and the consistency and the levelness of each year from '22 until what we have proposed, and we're right around historical numbers for when we budgeted for this year. And here, we were...did the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this is where we sat with all the department heads and talked about what their needs are for this year to take care of business and do the services for the city. And these are...we come up with about 10,698 for budgeted expenditures. And again, city department heads really dig deep into their...what they need and don't need, and only really put in there what is really, really needed to take care of business and make sure the services are getting done for the city. We...it is a 6% increase from budgeted dollars from last year, and some of that is upgrading certain things within the city. Like, in the administration part, we're looking to upgrade our computer system to Casell Connect with his...our accounting system, and that hasn't been updated for several years. And we're looking at about $18,000 increase in that. Building and zoning, which we'll get into more, they're looking at a project of $100,000 for digitalization of their building permits and plans and things that they have that are right now are all in boxes, and they want to get all that organized. Public Works is just looking for some part-time help to assist them with some administrative work, which we'll get into. And then, we talked about earlier regarding the police pension fund of an increase to get to our 100% of recommended contributions. And just like the revenue side, we have a little graph here or chart that kind of shows of what makes up most of the budget expenditures by source. And you can see they have public safety at 54%, and the two other ones is Public Works, and the other is 14% for other, which includes the interfund transfer that we do to capital, parking, and other funds. And then, the other ones show the other percentage that makes up the budgeted expenditures there. And on this slide here, you're looking at a chart that kind of shows everything kind of being consistent, flat, and expenditure-wise, and it just kind of shows over the years of where everything has been at. And then, here, Sherry will talk about the debt service and future payments that we need to make.
This is just the overview of the remaining debt service that we have currently outstanding for fiscal '25. We have one more year payable on our debt certificates that are funded by the water fund that will be paid off by the end of this budget year. The series 2013 in the top row middle, and the series 2020 in the bottom row right underneath, those are the road bonds that are coming due that we just talked about in fiscal '26. Our last one, series 2018, that one won't mature and be fully paid off until fiscal year 2029. So, this is just an overview of where the city's debt is at at a point in time. Okay, our first department. We'll...I'm going to turn it over to Peter. We're going to talk about the administration, finance, and legal departments budgets, and we're going to dig into some of the more significant fluctuations.
Thank you very much, Sherry. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I don't want to bore you, but there's not much going on for what I'm going to talk about next. We are pretty flat on everything, and I'll go through everything, but we unfortunately, the only bells and whistles that we have to buy were the Casell programming and some additional safety things for the internet that were recommended to us by our IT professionals. So, we really didn't get to spend on anything we really wanted this year. So, not that we...we're very happy with what we have, but I'll go through everything. As you can see, 6% for the total budget, and there's actually a breakdown of how that's spread out in the chart there. You'll see city council...you guys are very flat, 1.3%, and that's actually only because of the increase of a cost of living for the digital communications technician who comes out of the city council. That also includes your elected official stipends, the PZBA, the police fire, two natural resource commission interns. One is paid for through the park district. So, while we do have...while we do have two interns, one is covered by the park district. So, that is an arrangement that's worked out very well, I think, for the NRC. So, we're very happy that that's going to be continuing. Also, under the city council and commission's budget, are special events for the city. Again, this is flat. What we always do is we always anticipate at least $28,000 for the Rock the Runway event, and we're coming in right there all the time. As that increases, we're going to have to increase that year to year. We also have a $10,000 expenditure for our block party, which for $10,000, I think we get a lot of bang for the buck for that. And then, we always put in $5,000 for the occasional city event to help out with. We always have the community events like... We always have the community events, like the community days, and events such as that, so we wanna make sure there's a budget in there for that. Again, if that's not used, it's not used. Natural Resources Commission, as I mentioned, the two interns at twelve thousand, six, six thousand apiece. But then also, they are flat this year as last year for equipment and supplies. So they're doing the most they can with what you're able, what we're able to provide for them, and they do very well, in my opinion. Audiovisual department, this is Treasurer Tibbetts' department. And as far as I know, I don't think there's a change on this, he has an expected expense of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
The, his department, A.D. Department also focuses on the PEG fees that we see from our utility companies. So those are required spending on that type of equipment. And so Treasurer Tibbetts does his job and managed most fund with his current year expenses.
Is that like around fifteen thousand? Okay. And that's approximately like fifteen thousand is a PEG fees. For administration, we're the same. For full-time level, for full-time employees, our budget did increase sixteen thousand, four hundred. And if you notice, it's health insurance costs of twenty-two thousand, six hundred. What we've done, we've discussed this before, when we get a new employee, or a prospective new employee, we always have to assume the, I don't wanna say the worst possible situation, but we always have to assume the, the most amount of expenditure for that employee. So in this case, this is budgeted for the new deputy clerk. So we get, we had to budget for family insurance instead of single insurance, which the current employee has. So that's that twenty thousand dollar discrepancy. I will discuss later about the new candidate for deputy clerk. They will actually have the same insurance coverage that our current deputy clerk has. So that twenty thousand dollars that we, we expected to pay, we will end up not paying. Under finance, same situation, everything's flat. The increase of six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars mostly for the software cost increase for the Casell program, as, as Sherri had mentioned. Thank you very much. And then legal fees. This includes our city attorneys, the Tressler, house attorney, labor attorney, and outside counsel. The two hundred and forty thousand of Tressler, that's a historical amount that we've, we've normally paid in the past, so we wanna keep that the same. Then also, there's an increase because it's that time of year again, or I should say it's that cycle, where we will be doing a collective bargaining agreement or negotiations for our police sergeants and our police patrol officers. So that'll be an increase in expenditures for our legal department as we hire out a outside labor attorney to assist us with those negotiations. So that's the increase there, explaining that increase. And I believe that is everything that I have to bore you with for right now. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, it looks like I'm a mayor, city council. Community developers, the community development department is a pretty consistent, flat. We don't make things, we don't do a lot of spending and stuff, but we do manage our rental program, we, all the building permits, and our zoning board of appeals and those fees. Last year, we projected a pretty stable, conservative revenue, and we're happy to announce we did have a slight uptick in permits. So we're projecting for the end of this fiscal year to be about forty thousand dollars higher than the five eighteen. So there were no major big projects, but a lot of homeowners are still investing in their properties, and I'm gonna be projecting that same activity for next fiscal year. Expenses, we're coming in underneath what we budgeted, about nineteen thousand. Key factor there is we did not get a couple of the bigger projects coming in, so we did not have to spend professional services that we had targeted at that time. What we are finding out, and what I've been finding out, is that the stabilization of material costs has been a huge issue in what we're projecting for planned product, projects for our homeowners. However, labor costs and timing are still very fluctuating, you know? Delays caused by workforce issues. And then high cost of workforce that may not have the same skill set, which is causing delays in some of the projects. For expenditures, again, we're coming in under budget. For fiscal year twenty-five, we're looking at a flat revenue budget versus twenty-four. We don't have any projects in the pipeline right now. Usually, this time of year, we've got one or two set up for the plan commission. Right now, we don't have anything lined up, so we're not gonna project, we're gonna take a conservative approach on revenues. And if we happen to get a couple during the year, that just helps us out on the surplus at the end of the year. We're projecting continued good home remodeling and addition projects, and if the spring goes as, or I mean, if the winter continues to go like spring into the summer, seeing we're technically still in winter, we're gonna have another good homeowner season. So I think we'll be coming in and meeting our budgetary expenditures. And again, key factors, supply chain, the construction materials, if they hold well, will be good. And interest rates are still may limit some residents and businesses from doing any major projects. So that gives you kind of a summary of the highlights of what I'm seeing out there. On the revenue side, expenditure side, we're gonna be flat on our day-to-day operations. We do have three strategic budget initiatives coming forward. The first one is we're gonna be reporting out with our zoning code update analysis, and then our phase-two timeline will be coming up before the plan commission and zoning board here in the next month. So we have some funding set aside for the zoning code rewrite. Also too, we're looking at the digitalization of all our paper files. This is driven by two things. Number one, it's a preservation of all the historical data that we're required to keep under the Freedom of Information and Open Records Act. And then secondly, we are one accident away from losing the history of the city. And so we are gonna be targeting a digitalization project and our records management software. And those three this year will be about a hundred thousand dollar increase in expenditures, and with the digitalization and management software finishing up in fiscal twenty-six. So there are a few things that are laying out in the weeds. We are working with the Chicago Executive Airport and the redevelopment project on our side of the airport, on the east side, behind the, along Milwaukee Avenue, which is the Sky Harbor redevelopment. Right now, there's a lot of moving parts, so it's, it's there, but we don't have any hard timing yet. But if they come in, if it works, that will be a huge positive for the city. Prospect Crossing Shopping Center, the last two years I've been talking about now, how do we spur redevelopment? While working with the owner of that shopping center, we're looking at the possibility of redevelopment, some outlaw retail restaurant facilities. So we're actively working on that, and hopefully that comes to reality. The thirteen South Wolf Building has been sold, and new owners are looking at some remodeling. It's not gonna be big dollars, but it'll be some new dollars on the commercial side. And we're still actively talking to people about the Mir Point Town Home Project that was approved a couple of years ago. Right now, there's nothing firm going on, but we're still actively trying to get that moving forward. Overall, we're projecting a flat revenue and flat internal expenditures, except for the three budgeted strategic initiatives. That's all I have to report. If there's nothing, if you don't have any questions, or if you have questions, I am here.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, and everyone involved. My portion tonight is pretty small. The Public Works capital improvement and all the other funds are next meeting, so don't miss the next one. This is basically the small portion of Public Works is just, this is the keeping the door open type part of the budget. The basics of what we do without all the stuff that we wanna get done throughout the city with roads and projects and water and sewer. So this one is pretty basic coming up this year. We were asked to try to keep things low because of some other things in the budget this year. So we're coming in, we're projecting to be under budget for this year and this projected next budget. We're gonna do some road patching in the parking lots, neighborhood stormwater inspection program we're working on. One thing on this slide is the roof replacement. We did get that finished, so I just didn't strike that off the slide, so that's not, that's already funded. We're gonna do a little enhanced forestry work this year. That's a part of the normal general budget for us. And, can you flip to the next slide? Really, the, the big things for us for this year's budget, we have, we locked in our union contract, so we did a two, a quarter percent increase for this year and next year, and then a couple percentage points after that. That's one of the things for this year. Adding a Public Works part-time administrative assistant, this is about twenty hours a week, it's about twenty thousand towards our budget. It's gonna give us, and myself, the ability to handle things in a much better timely fashion. As most of you are aware, every phone call, email request, citizen response that comes in directed towards Public Works, I handle, along with all the other day-to-day activities. This'll get us to a point where we can have a little bit of relief on that. I'm tasking our, our guys to do administrative stuff where it's not the best money spent. They're good at nuts and bolts, they're not as good at some of the other stuff. So Public Works in the past, years back, had eight guys running work and a person full-time in the office. It was a little different back then, we had a little more engineering involved, and there was a, we didn't have as much of the outside influence with like a Geewald-Hamilton, but we were getting back to a little more streamlined. On the budget this year is that increase a few bucks. The Casell upgrade affects all departments. Each one of us, department heads, has a big chunk of that Casell im, im, um, increase. And that's it for this. Again, next time, we're gonna talk about all the other pieces and parts that we do. And the capital improvement program is a huge part of it. So I hate to be short and sweet tonight, but that's the little part of it. Are there any questions? Mr. Mayor, you good?
Everybody good? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Good morning, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city staff, council. I was gonna try and beat Mr. Roscoe's presentation as far as, I, I just give up, I, there's no way. My meat potatoes is this week, next week I think Bob's gonna talk about the pension and a couple other capital. But I would like to say, talk about the accomplishments this year. We did manage to make a hybrid position with the administrative assistant and Rochelle, our records manager. So far, it's worked out really well, she's doing both jobs very well. We've hired two full-time police officers in the last year, and after eighteen months, I can finally say that our east side cameras are working. Mark knows the headaches that we've been dealing with. We fired a company, we hired another company, didn't work out so well we needed. Antennas, new, new cameras, but we are finally up and running, and those cameras help us out a lot. The flock cameras, those are the license plate readers, they have been up and running for just about a year, and they have helped in many criminal incidents where we get a plate, we get a vehicle make, and it's come back to help prosecution. So those are important, and I hope they're here to stay forever. We did hire a part-timer officer, Mulaney, who actually left us for private business and then came back to us. He's still working a job, a non-sworn job, but he's working part-time for us on, on weekend, in the evenings when we need it most. Records department, finally, we're up to date on all the mandates for records destruction so far. The unfunded mandates required by the Safety Act and the Pre-Charles Fairness Act, we are doing this without really much cost to the city. We have great instructors, and we're working it out, where guys, instead of, while they're getting trained, they get another day off. And so far, because we're just about fully staffed, we're able to do that. Social services, as you all know, and thank you very much for authorizing to hire a full-time social worker, she's been terrific. She has worked well with us, the community, she's the one that started our Prospect Heights Helping Hands Fund. Those funds have helped many of our residents already, and so she's a great asset. So we do have twenty-seven police staff, twenty-three full-time, however, we are now short one, as of literally Friday. Administrative Sergeant Godere, his last day after twenty-seven years was Friday, and Officer Hurtis, who we did hire last year as a lateral, slid right into the record spot. So he's now records clerk, not a sworn officer. So there's a significant savings right there for the police department. And he's got a wife that works full-time, and he will not be using our benefit package as well, but he's gonna be a great asset. He already started today, he worked very hard, and he's very excited about a new chapter in his twenty-seven-year police career, so now he's going to the record side. We are in need of one part-time desk person, if anybody knows of anyone. Again, we would like it to be a college student or retired person. Basically, they're to watch, they're there to watch prisoner if we have one, so if you have any recommendations, feel free to send them my way. Our goals, maintain current level of quality service. I think I'm, I'm proud of our people, I'm proud of the way, the amount of time it takes to respond, within a few minutes, we're there, obviously unless we're handling something major. We have a problem, as well as most agencies in Illinois, just retaining and hiring police officers. Not retaining, once they're here, they, they love it, but over the years, our pool of candidates have gone from maybe seventy to eighty, to sixty to forty to twenty. So we have a hard time finding quality candidates. This year, we're going to National Testing Network, that's kind of the hot commodity these days. It's, we get candidates from all over the country. You can apply, we will interview you via Zoom, and most of the departments I've spoken to triple, quadruple the candidate pool. So we're looking forward to maybe having fifty to eighty candidates in our next police testing. Talked about the Quality Training and Safety Act. Sergeant Mark Fuente and Deputy Chief Milo are doing a good job of that. I believe we have a very high morale within the police department. Again, we're not, we're not micromanaging, but we step in when we need to, and our guys and girls are doing terrific. Support wellness and mental health, we do have some outside support for that. They can go online, they can, it's anonymous. We have peer support officers on one of them, we have a couple more, so if there ever is a need, they know where to go. Our, the revenue, it's pretty, been pretty flat over the years. And then the expenditures, same as well. You, 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 you'll see there, there's a significant increase, but I'll get to that in a later slide, but pretty flat there. Traffic fines, um, projecting, um, a little bit lower than last year. Our red light camera was down a couple years ago because of, um, some street repairs, and then, you know, we had COVID, so there was less traffic, so, this year's been a full year of, everyone's back at work, cameras have been back up, so I'm anticipating, uh, not so many violators, and yet I'm still shocked after all these years, how many people violate that intersection, and it is very dangerous. If, if there ever is a camera needed for that, it's, it's that intersection at Milwaukee and Palatine. Uh, parking ordinance violations, slight, um, decrease, and I'm gonna just say because of the, um, finance and Police Department's work on complacency for these city stickers, I'm expecting more people to purchase them, which means less fines, and that's good. Administrative toes, down a little bit, uh, DUIs have been down over the years, and like I wrote here in my comments, that's a good thing, that's great, but, uh, with Lyft and Uber, more people are realizing, spend 30, 50 bucks on Uber instead of 5,000 on a DUI, that's, that's, that's good. Also, Illinois is handing out, uh, the temporary driver's license, so, um, where years ago, you used to make a lot of arrests for driving without a license, many, many people now have the temporary driver's license, that's also, also good. Alarm fees, um, that's down, again, each of the past three years, um, where there's a downward trend, and that's, the word gets out that people comply. Um, every year, um, something that I, I don't even think, I have to cross my fingers and hope that we get, but every year we do get, from the Bureau of Justice, we do get, uh, the bulletproof vest partnership. It, it's, it's half of the cost of a holistic vest, uh, sometimes it's four to six, um, vests, which is terrific. We always get back, um, money from the, I don't see that here, but, but we do, um, the Illinois, um, Training Board, um, they pay 100% of any cost that we have to send a person, uh, to the academy. Um, so we will be getting, um, we sent Officer Masson to the academy last year, we should be receiving, um, refund, I think, $3,500 from that. Also, crossing my fingers, uh, we also put in a grant for, um, Bureau of Justice to pay for half of our, um, body worn cameras. We are mandated to have it launched by January 1st of 2025, we're gonna get that program going, um, in October. We wanna make sure it's up and running, get all the kinks out, but I'm hoping that, uh, we qualify for that, I'm pretty sure we will. Well, we, we should know here in a couple months. Uh, DA Task Force Officer, Detective O'Connor's doing a terrific job. Only problem with that is, is, is we can't project how much money comes in. Um, I know there's plenty of, uh, there's plenty of previous cases, even from when Milo was in that, um, Task Force several years ago. The government works slow, um, so we never know when it's coming, um, so it is hard to forecast. I have used, uh, out of the DA funds, we are gonna be reorganizing our Police Department with, um, new office furniture and a new paint job, and that's gonna keep the building, I have, up and running for another 14 to 15 years. So, when that's done, please come by for, for a tour. Uh, again, as I told you, I think, the last City Council, that, um, our Detective Division needs a separate location. They do a lot of things that they, they need a privacy, and this, um, reorganization is gonna give them their own separate area to work in. So here, um, the $618,000 increase in the budget, $545,000 is due to the increase of the Police Pension and the General Fund. Um, so again, uh, the expenditures from Police Department's pretty flat, just like the last, previous several years. Other significant increases, um, the professional services, we have new time clock software, computer upgrades, and a court reporter, and, uh, see, the liability insurance premium increased, and anticipating our body worn cameras, we have to go with a faster speed internet, and that was an increase of $3,500, and we're hoping that this will be sufficient, otherwise fiber optics is the next, it's quicker than the, our fast internet, so hopefully we won't have to use that, but if we do, I'll be coming back and letting you all know about that. And I'll see you all at the next City Council meeting, any questions?
Uh, I had a quick question, um, some years ago, we used to get, um, a Volca grant, uh, Victims of Crimes Act, I believe, and then a few years back, that was cut, um, is that still available? And also, that used to fund some of the things, the extra things that, that the-
So, that actually funded Rebecca and Casey.
Oh, okay.
So that went for Social Services, uh, one was full-time, one was part-time, and so, um, we went with a full-time social worker. One full-time social worker that's on our payroll now, so we, we did away with that. Even the person, um, I don't recall her name, she even, the one who supplied it from Omni, the, the part-time social worker into full-time, thought that going the route of a full-time social worker, and I can't think of any other municipality within several miles of us that has not gone to full-time social workers. So it's a good thing, and, um, but it, it may come in handy with other things from within the Police Department, I can look at that, but that particular grant was specifically for social workers.
If, if I could add to that, Chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the reasons we made that change too, is that primarily through the Omni program was the Victims Assistance Program. Working with, uh, uh, Rosangela's, uh, certified, and I believe she has that certi-
Yes, she still has them as, as a resource.
Um, they're, it's, it's also proactive things, preventative, um, handling of, uh, family situations, youth situations, it's not just reactive.
Right, and, and so Rosangela uses them as a resource, and so do we when we do peer jury. So a lot of our, um, juvenile offenders and their families go there for counseling, so we still use them for free.
And just lastly, the, um, Summer Youth Outreach Program, I know that's continuing on, and, uh, is that funded through the department or through private donation?
Yeah, that's-
That is such a vital program, especially in, in my area.
It's private donations, we, you know, um, a lot of business owners in town, um, our Police Association, Lions Club, um, Rotary Club, they've always, um, pitched in and helped us, that is one of the, it's, it's definitely needed, and, um, we're funded again for this summer, we're looking forward to doing another five to seven field trips with the youth.
Great, 'cause that is so important, especially in my ward, along-
Oh, yeah, well, definitely important.
Uh, great for the kids there.
And if, obviously, if, if somehow that, the funding falls off, then I will come before the Council and the Mayor, and I'm, I'm sure they'll help, if I have to put that into the budget, that, that's a very, very important.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So that concludes this week's, um, presentation, does anybody have any questions on anything that we've talked about thus far?
Any questions?
No, okay, then we'll close out and look forward to the-
I got, I got one.
Oh, sorry.
I got one question, and I'm gonna make a few comments, 'cause I, I think the public doesn't get a good sense of what budgeting and Prospect Heights and, and putting together budgets in Prospect Heights is like. Could you, as you deal with other municipalities, you've worked at other municipalities, you've seen them all, can you tell me what is glaringly different about us? When you're, when you're putting together our budget, and you're looking at our revenues and expenses and how we do things, what is different about us versus another town? And I'm, I'm talking about other towns around us, don't, don't say, "Well, I'd have to go south of Haiti to get to a town of our size," and, you know, it's out of the country. O'Whealing, Mount Prospect, Arlington Heights, Des Plaines, uh, Glenview, what, what's different about them than us budget-wise?
Well, on a good note, I have to compliment the budget process that's here in Prospect Heights. Um, the people involved are very dedicated in wanting to do their best with these funds of this, of the residents, so, we're close on the numbers, there's not any fluff, we're lean, and so, everyone's on the same page as far as that goes, and you don't see that everywhere. Revenue-wise, on the budgeting for the revenues, we're limited in our, in our revenues because of non-home rule. Um, property tax levies at other places are, are bigger and growing and-
How big are, I mean, as a percent of a tax bill, what, other towns, I know Wheeling's like 12%-
Yeah.
-of a tax bill, we're 3.3 or 3.4.
Yeah, I don't have any numbers on that one, I'm sorry.
No, but it's just, I mean, 'cause when you're, when you're at a budget hearing, a budget meeting like this, and you hear a department head saying, "Well," and we heard it twice.
Yeah.
Uh, "Well, the next person we bring in will only need individual coverage for the insurance versus family coverage." And that might just like go over people's heads and be like-
Well, the difference there is 25,000 versus 10, so, when you're looking at staffing, you immediately tack on 25 grand to any new employee besides their wages.
Is that common, though, that department heads and other municipalities are worried about what somebody's coming in with as far as a need for insurance?
No, not to that level, not to that level. But we are, we're, we're combing through the numbers, and, and everyone's pretty aware of what goes, what their costs are, and like I said, everyone's prudent, and it's, it's a good process. Um, the revenues are limited, um, I had a, uh, one client just increased their, um, uh, their hotel tax by 1%, but they're not, they're home rule, so they have that leeway. Um, if you looked down our revenue streams, what, what did we say, 68% of it's tax revenue, we have no control over that going up or down. We talk, we do a good job going down and talking to our, our legislators and trying to influence the state's budget and the different laws that are going into play, but we don't really have a, any control over those numbers. So 68% of our budget is given, no leeway on that, and so the, it really falls to our fees, and those are also limited. By ordinance, we review them, but we still need to stay competitive, so, we don't have a lot of, a lot of opportunities, um, as non-home rule to, to really drive up any significant revenue, which is why we, we beat our heads against the wall and try super hard on the grant funding, local funding, state funding, anyone funding, because that's, that's our opportunity.
You had brought up the capital improvements this year were, uh, a total of like 6.5 billion in that range, yet grants to pay for those were in the-
About 5 million.
5 million, so I mean, you're, you're at an 80% leverage on, you know, $8 we get from somebody else and $2 from us. Is that common, to have that high a leverage, if we don't do projects unless they are 80% plus leveraged against a grant from the federal government or the county or the state or-
Right, right, well, in the last couple of years with ARPA money and, um, the COVID money, all that money's been thrown out to the local municipalities, so there's been a lot of significant projects done and started, but in terms of worrying about having your 20% share before you go apply for a grant, no, that's not common, we are, we are working on the wire in terms of funding our projects, and so we need to have shovel-ready, as Joe says all the time, shovel-ready projects for when the grants are ready to be awarded. We can support our end of it, but we certainly couldn't run that whole project by ourselves, so then it gets delayed, so we're limited in that sense.
If, if I could add to that too, because when, when you're a municipality, you also have to be conscious of your other taxing districts. Uh, and certainly in Prospect Heights, aside from the non-home rule issue, we are an extremely limited tax base. We're, we're primarily a, a, a town of homes. We have very limited, uh, commercial districts, um, I remember there was a little bit of controversy a few years back about Connor Commercial going in behind, um, uh, behind Quincy Park. Uh, you know, people thought, could, you know, could the city absorb that land or so forth? Even though we don't collect property tax, which is extremely difficult, that's, that's a reliable source for municipalities, so we really are sweeping the corners, but that also funds our, our school districts, our park district, fire district. Um, so, when, whenever, and Dan mentioned it tonight, there's a possibility of, um, of two fast food restaurants, um, coming to Rand Road. There might be some opposition to that. Folks, please remember that, e- even if it doesn't provide property taxes to the city, it provides to the park district, park district, uh, referendum laws, uh, school district, referendum laws, they don't have a tax base, uh, and it's, it's the choices this community has, has made for, for many years, but that is the price of it. So, just, just a consideration, aside from the home rule, non-home rule, which will probably never happen, um, it, it's also an extremely limited tax base.
Well, it's mostly residential, and if you look at any towns that have commercial properties, shopping malls, a casino, any of those big commercial entities in other towns, those draw in tons of discretionary spending, that draws in sales tax, income tax, all of that is drawn in from commercial, big commercial operations that you see in a lot of the other cities.
And aside from, um, commercial, we, hopefully we can get this back going, but, um, the Lexington development, Muir Park, uh, provided aside from, because of the TIF, it was gonna regenerate that park, but it also provided a steady, uh, property tax to, because the assessed valuation is higher. We put in three or four homes there, there's, there's, there's not much of an impact, but if you put in 50, 60, uh, townhomes, now there's some resources for the school, park district, fire district, and others, so.
Yeah, and, and we go to a, a meeting about the TIF for that development, right, the school district's gonna stand to take 30% of a new tax bill from houses that didn't exist, so from whole cloth, you're making, you know, hundreds, millions and millions of dollars worth of EAV that they're gonna get 30% for, and they fought us on the TIF, and when it's all said and done, once we pay our road bonds off, we're gonna be collecting $500,000 a year in property tax, and that's not gonna do anything for us, I mean, I really think we need to have meetings here to really explain to people what, what it's like, 'cause, you know, I hear all the time, "Why don't we have more plows on the streets, why don't we have more police on the street and everything else," and, and it's, it's, people look at us and think we're Arlington Heights or Mount Prospect, that we operate similar to them, and we're not, it's not even, not even close, and, um, so that, that's something, and, and then the state doesn't do us any favors, I was downstate a couple weeks ago, this Tier Two issue, we finally got a hard cost on it, 300-plus thousand dollars a year, and what will they do for us to let us help collect that? Nothing. So I'm in Springfield with all these other mayors from around here, and they're all like, "Wow, we gotta raise our property tax in order to make up that difference if we have to go to Tier Two, what are you gonna do?" We can't do anything, we wouldn't be able to, to collect that in any manner. But yet the state dictates that, uh, same thing with the grocery tax, for a lot of people say, "Oh, this is great, the grocery tax can go away, and we're gonna lose about $500,000 a year." These other towns, all they'll do is turn around and add a non-ho- a, a home rule sales tax on top of their tax already, you'll, you'll pay the same amount you're already paying, and they'll, they'll get the same money, we can't do that. So, as these things fall off the page here, that's 500,000 in, in groceries, 300,000 in Tier Two, um, the chief didn't even talk about it because he's always just worried, just like all the other department heads, about making it work, and instead of explaining what happened, the Safety Act is gonna cost us $100,000 the first year, and I don't know how much every other year after that. Another mandate the state gives us that we have to do, no money to pay for. And all these other towns around us are able to, to make it up, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's a frustr- frustrating thing about this job, and, and, um, you know, we're always out there trying to, to get the state to understand, and our state reps in that, but it's difficult. And, you know, the staff does a good job, this is, uh, you know, in the northwest suburbs of Chicago, they have to operate like we do in comparison to Arlington Heights, Wheeling, Mount Prospect, Des Plaines, Glenview, uh, it is frustrating, and people don't believe it. I, when I was down there, they, "What do you mean you don't have a property tax?" It's, if you have a bond that we're paying for, once that's paid off, it goes away, there's no more tax, it's not coming in anymore. And they, they don't understand it, they don't, they don't see how we do it, and, uh, I have to, and we have to do a better job explaining that to the public so they understand.
So Pat, when I started on the Council, uh, a few years ago, I started collecting, you know, documents that we receive on every time we get gypped because we're not home rule, right, so when we, uh, like our neighboring towns, we have video gaming, they can charge X for a machine, we charge half of that, like, not charge, but like our fee is half, right? So, I've been throwing them into a bin, right, and, you know, the bin's like this full now. So, I mean, I think it would be, and again, I get emails from constituents, you know, "Why do we sell vehicle stickers?" Okay, well, if you could come up with a- Okay, well, if you could come up with a way to recoup that meaningful amount of revenue, I'm glad to consider it, right? But that's how we generate revenue for our city. So, I mean, in my mind, maybe we should keep a running list of just the, the random things that pop up and, you know, have that available, right? So when I get an email from a resident about city stickers, I could send them the list and say, "Hey, just FYI, within the last 12 months, these are the revenue opportunities we missed out on because we're not home rule."
None of which are property tax. They're all just fees and different things.
Right, right. Random, like random things, right? So, I mean, I think, other than me throwing things into a bin, right? Like having a, a journal or a log of these items that come up. Again, the hotel tax you, you referenced. It might just be nice to have some kind of document, uh, that we could have at our, you know, disposal to share with people when these kinds of things come up.
That's a good idea. Maybe it's like a supplement to the budget. If we were home rule with no property tax, no home rule property tax, what would the $750 a license per video game machine times the 70 or 80 that our town generate? You know, what would an increase in our, in our sales tax bring us up to the other towns around us for when people go shop at the grocery store or buy things? Not just residents paying it. And it's, it's probably significant, um, but...
I mean, it's, and it's certainly significant to a municipality like ours, right? I mean, it's, you know, it's a meaningful revenue stream, you know, for these various things that we're just, we just can't capture. So, um, and I, I think it would be worthwhile to start some kind of running list of, of those types of items. I guess I, I can grab the stuff I've thrown into my bin over the last few years. But I think putting it together in a format that could be shared, again, which is very factual, right? I mean, it's not propaganda, just sharing information on where we're missing out. I, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, it, it would be.
And maybe then, once we have that, that list that we could, you know, share with the residents, then maybe we can have an opportunity to better educate them on why they should consider home rule. Because really, we do need it. I mean, we've needed it for a long time. And I know that it's been difficult. We had, we, it's been now, what, it's been maybe, what, four or five years since we had the last?
2018.
2018, okay. So, I mean, we could consider doing it again, but we do need to educate people so they understand that this is our revenues that we just can't utilize because we're not home rule, and they are significant.
All right. And, and not, not to pit districts or, or taxing bodies against each other, but when you look at Wheeling, and they're over 12% in their property tax of, of what your tax bill. So if you have a, um, you know, $10,000, you know, tax bill, in Wheeling, that portion is $1,200 that goes to the village. In Prospect Heights, it's 3.5%, so it's, you know, 300 and some dollars would come to us. But then I always say, "Yeah, but they have a fire department. You guys don't have to pay for a fire department. That's why theirs is higher." I'm like, "Okay." I said, "Well, look at the tax bill." And again, I'm not pitting districts against each other. The amount you pay in Prospect Heights for the fire department is more than what the city of Prospect Heights gets. I mean, there, there's staggering numbers. I mean, they're just, when you look at it, it's just, uh, they're just mind-blowing where we're at right now with that. So, yeah, I, I think we have to do a better job of pointing that out and, um, and, and, and trying to do something about home rule, even if it's just a matter of the state allowing us to do everything but a property tax and get them to allow us, just to have the ability to do all the fees and things for transient people through town, video gaming. We don't take in all our money from video gaming from residents. It's from people outside of town. And we need, we need to, we need to work on that, but I'll get off my soapbox and...
One more thing. Back in 2018, when we had that referendum and, and the voting results came out, we have, we, at that time, we had a little over 15,900 some residents. And if you count all the votes, only, we only had 4,700 votes, you know, that actually people came in and voted. So that's important too. So not only education, but getting everyone to really participate.
Okay, that's, uh...
Excuse me, Danielle, if you want to pass us that information, we'll take a first pass at putting it together.
Yeah, 'cause I just started throwing things in the bin.
Hand it over. We'll, we'll give it a first try.
Thank you. Number five, we have no appointments, confirmations, and proclamations. Number six, do we have anybody who wants to speak on agenda matter?
Uh, no, we don't.
Anybody want to? No? All right. Item seven, consent agenda. We don't have a consent agenda today. So we'll go right to new business. Item 9A, ordinance O-2403, staff memo and ordinance approving the sale, donation, destruction of surplus property, first reading. Joe, would you like to comment on that?
Oh, sure. That's, um, uh, it's a routine, uh, I think this is police depart- I was out this last week.
That's, I'll, I'll take it, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, yeah, this is the follow-up, uh, to the council's approval of using DEA funds for the renovation of the police department. So there's, uh, office equipment, uh, electrical equipment that is either gonna be, is, is no longer needed or is being replaced. Uh, so the chief wants to see if he can donate it to anybody, or we'll, we'll see if we can auction it off, or some of it just may not be, uh, in, in a condition that it can be used, period, and we'll just destroy it. So this is like, like, uh, Administrator Wade said, this is a pretty normal, uh, resolution that we put through from time to time. But this is specifically coming on the heels of the police department renovation.
Okay, thank you. And it's a first reading, so there's no action required. This'll come up at our next meeting for approval. Item B, Resolution R-2411, resolution relating to the semi-annual review of closed session minutes for the city council for Prospect Heights. This is us, um, I think sealing is the wrong word, but unsealing or opening any, um, closed session minutes that no longer need to be closed anymore. This, there was a review of those minutes, and there was a list created of the ones that needed to be, or could be approved to be open. Um, council had a chance to go to City Hall to review those beforehand. And this is just a resolution authorizing the release of those minutes. So we would need a motion to approve Resolution R-2411.
So moved.
Second, Morgan Adams.
We have a first and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, Resolution 2412, staff memo and resolution authorizing professional service agreement for 2024 lake management services for Hillcrest Lake with Tigress Aquatic Services in the amount of $8,550. This is for the, uh, treatment of Hillcrest Lake, um, the, uh...
Aquatic plants.
Yeah, trying to keep those down so that the lake stays healthier. This is something we normally did. I don't know if we did this last year.
No, we did, uh, just a little bit of background. Uh, how this came about was several years ago. In, in fact, even before that, the, the lake at one time was owned by the homeowners association in the area. And it was, um, uh, donated or gifted to the city of Prospect Heights, which then the city took on responsibility for the maintenance and care of the lake. Uh, several years ago, there was, uh, uh, a, a, a great outgrowth of Elodie plant that kinda like, um, plants all across the lake. To many people, that was viewed as unsightly. Um, the city also, rather than just going in and bomb it with, with, uh, uh, weed killer, uh, hired a, a company, Hay and Associates, which also did a study of the health of the lake. And they looked at concerns about, um, the fish population, the oxygen level, phosphates, all kinds of things like, like that. And they gave us a kind of a blueprint, um, to, for the care of the lake. One of the things, uh, the, uh, Natural Resources Commission did, the shoreline plantings is huge because that took care of, one of the problems identified was erosion. Uh, and it also, by making it less friendly for deer's habitat, kept, kept the phosphates out of the lake. So we're, we've been actively doing this, but at the time, we also contracted for a company, uh, to provide the, uh, the weed killer. And the concern is, uh, how it's done. Now, certainly, over time, I've had many conversations with Mr. Kupchak from the homeowners association, his concerns. He's done a lot of research. The NRC has a lot of concerns too about, um, the second order effects, okay? If you, if you get rid of all this plant life, what, what comes in after it and so forth? So following the Hay blueprint, we developed a request for proposal. And I stress, it's a request for proposal, not a bid, meaning there's flexibility as the treatment plan. The, uh, we, so this year, just out of, um, because it was time for a new RFP, the companies had changed and so forth, we went out for a request for proposal. The company Tigress, I think that there's two factors, that they, they were the ones that their proposal, I think, most closely followed what the Hay plan, uh, the Hay study was for treatment of the lake as far as concern of second order effects, um, how to look at plant life, uh, but also phosphate levels, things like that. And the second thing, quite, quite honestly, is that the, uh, company representatives are people that had worked with our, our previous vendor, which is no longer, uh, which was, um, Clark Aquatic Services. And I think, if I could say, I think both the Natural Resources Commission and Mr. Kupchak, I think we're pretty satisfied with Travis, Jennifer, and how they were managing the lake. So my recommendation, I think this is the safest recommendation for the treatment of the lake. That's just, just a little bit of background, how we got to where we are today.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve.
So moved. Morgan Adams?
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, requested waiver of first reading for ordinance O-2404, staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations for the property at 208 East Euclid Avenue for the reduction of yard setback. This is the first reading for it, so we're looking for the waiver to, of this first reading. Wait, wait to say that, yes. So we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, O-24, ordinance O-2404, staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations for the property at 208 East Euclid Avenue for the reduction of yard setback. This is the second reading for approval. We have a motion?
So moved. Morgan Adams?
Second, Cameron.
We have a first and a second. Any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, the property owners are here. Questions?
I thought so. You wouldn't be here for... Uh, so we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all done? Um, item 10, staff elected officials and commission reports. We do not have any, yeah, everybody had, uh, I think Dan wanted to make a comment.
Um, Mayor, thank you very much. Um, I hate to start off this time of year with the news that happened today. Uh, if you all recall, last summer, we had quite a rash of contractor fraud. Um, Gypsy Asphalt Services that hit the town and, um, cost our residents significant money for work without permit, poor quality work. Well, with the nice weather yesterday, our first two residents got hit today. We were able to intervene, thank goodness to one of the residents who we helped last year, stepped in and notified us immediately. We were able to, um, at least identify the two principals. We did issue some tickets, but my guess is they will not go forward. The scam works like this. A nice day, you're out in the yard working. A nice gentleman will walk up and say, "Hey, are you interested in having your driveway done? We're in the area, uh, we're giving deals, and, um, because your driveway, we're not gonna expand it, does not need a permit. We can give you a good deal if you sign up today, and it's always cash." Um, the trucks are licensed from other states. Uh, this crew today happened to be from South Carolina, Virginia, and Massachusetts. They had hit the, uh, neighborhood in Ward Four, uh, south of Camp McDonald Road and just north of Camp McDonald. Thank goodness that we had conscientious citizens that were looking out for their neighbors. But this could have been a very expensive day. The, what we tell people is, yes, driveways need permits. We're your quality control. If you're spending the money to get it done, we look at the inspection to make sure it's there. We make sure that the final's done correctly. We make sure that the contractor is licensed, bonded, and insured. So should things go wrong, we have a way to be able to protect you and your situation. I hope that because of the diligence that this resident did and our, my staff today, that we were able to thwart it ahead of time. We will be doing a lot of public information, but the biggest thing is, is talk to your neighbors. This is gonna happen all summer long, and it's not even spring yet.
Don't they have to have a solicitor's permit? Shouldn't you ask them?
That would be a wise choice, but I'm still amazed to this day after doing this for 30 years. And it, I wish it was new of how many people will spend a lot of money on a project they did not solicit. Somebody walked up the door and knocked on it, and they're asking you to spend tens of thousands of dollars. It's just incredible, but people are trusting, people are, um, thinking they're getting a good deal. But it, it is one that, at the end of the day, you'll, the product will not be good. And depending on what they do, you may have additional costs to correct it to meet city codes. We may have to come back to you because the work they did may violate our zoning codes or other codes that impact the cities negatively. Um, so with that, please be diligent, please keep your eyes out. And there should be nobody coming to your door on a Sunday afternoon asking you to do, kind, you know, doing construction projects. And they should be coming back with either solicitor's license or making sure that they come and talk to the city. And if you have any questions, please reach out. We're here to answer those questions. So thank you very much for the time, and you'll be seeing a lot of this this summer from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, it's, uh, it's Karen Schultheis Week. Uh, and I'm gonna ask any other staff members to join me in this, but, um, this is Karen's last week. Her last day is Friday. It's her last meeting. I've worked 30 years and, and 10 years, so I can pass Dan's, uh, with that. I don't know many, how many hundreds of people I've worked with, uh, but every once in a while, there's one that stands out that's exceptional, and that's Karen. Uh, she has the perfect temperament for any workplace. Uh, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with her. Um, she's reliable, professional, but she's also fun and, and a very kind person. And, uh, I'll invite any other staff members to share a, a memory or so. And that's, i- i- in my 40 years, if, if I could pick an all-star team, Karen would be at the top of the list.
I will tell you from a record standpoint, how she finds the things I need in those boxes in those rooms is amazing. And she is, um, keeps us compliant with the FOIA requests, so you are gonna be missing me.
May I say one?
I will add that, um, over the years, I've learned so much from you. You've always been there to answer my questions. And, um, just relating one quick story, uh, about a year, year and a half ago, I was asked to speak at a, a local grade school when I was acting mayor. And Karen, sure enough, came up with goodie bags for every student at the school with, with treats. And, uh, you're always there for, for us, and we really do appreciate it.
I wanna add to that. When, when I was city clerk, I mean, Karen helped me so much. You've done a great job. And, and even after that, as alderman, you've done so much for us as aldermen. And we really appreciated you, and... appreciated you and really sorry that you are leaving us.
Karen, it's been such a short time, just a couple of years, but joining me, we're directors for the Chicago North Shore Convention Bureau, as I have, so to speak, educated you on that whole process, I've learned so much from you, and you are one fun friend.
Thank you. You are my...
You definitely will be missed.
Sorely missed. Thank you for all your...
But now you get to enjoy retirement, and that's, that's hard. I got many years to go, but now you can enjoy, you know, your retirement and not have to worry about work, and you got a grand baby on the way, so...
Yes, I do.
You've got a lot to look forward to.
I would just, thank you. It's unbelievable, you're just, all of your saying, but it was 10 years ago that I was working part-time here, and you guys asked me, for one month, will you just, one month, work full-time? And it turned out to be the greatest career move I've ever made in my life, so I love my bosses, I love everybody I work with, I love this whole crowd, and even Prospect Heights is my homeboy from home.
You know, Karen, we are trying to put a, we are gonna have a little part-time opening in public works, so...
Coming to the police department first.
I'll arm wrestle you for it. Mr. Mayor, if I may, Karen, I feel like I'm losing my cool older sister. I can't tell you how many times coming in, just seeing your light on as I'm turning the corner from Joe's office has made me in a better mood. So I knew we'd talk about something interesting that day. You've been there for everything Joe and I have ever needed. You will, I don't think in a million years we could find a replacement for you that would be as perfect as you, Karen, but you were part of the conversation, you were part of the team. So we did get a candidate for deputy clerk. Karen, Dan Peterson, and myself, pardon me, sat on the interview team. Karen liked her right off the bat. She liked her shoes, and she liked her purse. But this candidate really, above all, actually had the municipal experience we were looking for, but not only just municipal experience, actual experience in doing what Karen's job does on a daily basis. So it was, as John said, it was, as Joe said, it was a godsend because she was one of the last people that actually applied. Her name is Lisa Busby. She will be starting, unfortunately, she had a family issue because she's coming in from out of town. She was gonna start on Wednesday. She will be starting on Thursday, so she'll be able to shadow Karen for a couple days. Not that she couldn't come in cold, because she has, she does have the experience, but we wanted a couple days where she was relaxed and could kind of learn at the feet of the master, and maybe, she has a great personality, and I think Karen's personality hopefully will rub off on her a little bit more. But she's gonna, she's gonna fit in fantastic. She actually has worked, and I'll, I'll let this slide, and Joe knows my feelings about fire departments. She worked for the Barrington Fire Department. She's worked for the Arlington Heights Fire Department. She actually worked for the city's attorney's office. So if anybody knows about city's attorneys, they deal with FOIAs, and they deal with all the legal aspect of the deputy clerk's position. And lately, she's coming in from Sarasota, Florida, where she was actually taking care of a sick family member. And she worked as the executive assistant for the Board of County Commissioners in Florida. So like I said, she has a wealth of experience and skill set, knowledge that we were looking for for this position. So Karen, I hate to see you go. You were, you really, you really made the days fly by, and whenever I needed something, you were always there for me, backing me up and helping me out. And I just hope in the short period of time you're gonna be with Lisa, you can instill in her just the work ethic that you bring forward every day. So all I can say is, Karen, thank you very much. You do not know how much you're gonna be missed.
I was just gonna add, with Karen's departure, initially, I was thinking we have some very big shoes to fill, but actually, we have some very fancy, sparkly shoes that she always wears every day to fill, so thank you for everything you do, Karen.
All right, thank you. Item 11, approval of warrants. The clerk, please read the warrants.
Yes, the total of the warrants, we, the amount is $186,039.52. We had a wire payment on February 23rd, payroll payment in the amount of $188,996.42, bringing the total warrant amount to $367,035.94. For council's approval, please.
We need a motion to approve.
So move, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Did you get that second? Who it was? Yep, okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Motion passes. Anybody have public comment on non-agenda matter? No?
No.
Okay. We have no executive session, so we will go right to item 15, adjournment. I look for a motion to adjourn.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.